No use following the council chambers. Please rise for invocation by Reverend Vernon Curry of the Highland Drive Church of Christ.
That's right. Father in heaven, we are so thankful for the United States of America and for the country that we live in, for the freedoms that we enjoy. We ask your blessings upon all of our leaders, upon our president and our congress, all of the judges and the governors. Especially at this time, we ask your blessings upon the city council that they will use the wisdom that you've given them to make the best decisions for our town. We pray for each citizen that is affected by this, these decisions, and each one that will address the council tonight, that each one will use the wisdom and the courtesy as you would expect from your people. Thank you for Jesus who came and died that we might have eternal life. These blessings we ask in his name. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you. Roll call, Mrs. Kirby?
Councilwoman Pearson.
Here.
Councilwoman Aftier.
Here.
Councilman Branham.
Here.
Councilman Smith.
Here.
Mayor Proton McVeigh.
Here.
Mayor DeGerris.
Here.
And six presidents.
Thank you. Disclosure of interest, any member of the city council may disclose any possible conflict of interest dealing with either any item on the printed agenda or with any matter discussed at a previous meeting. Seeing none, citizens input, each person in the audience may take this opportunity to address the city council on any matter which is not on the printed agenda. You give your name and address, please, sir.
Charles Ogden, 25, 26 Claremont Lane, Papa Bluff, Missouri. We got a little problem with property that belongs to the city adjoining my mom's property. This is Mellow Brook subdivision, I don't know if you see it or not, but my mom's property is right here, this is the city's property, and the city has a deed to easement that they acquired here in 1961 for a substation there. This neighbor owned 64 over here is building a fence clear down the line, even on the line where city and mom's property borders. We had used that road, mom and dad bought the property in 99, and between me and dad, up till this neighbor moved in up here, it always kept it mowed, dammed, where we'd use it in and out for access to the backyard and stuff. And he had told me that, Tony Chilton told him that he could go ahead and build across the city line there and stuff, and I talked to Tony on the 11th, and I thought the guy was blowing smoke, but the way Tony talked, yeah, he told me to go ahead and run the line on down the line. Well, the big concern here is not having access into the back of our property like we've always had all these years. This guy's only been there about a year and a half. The secondary problem we have, this ditch down here, if anybody's familiar with this neighborhood, it floods quite often. And if he runs a gate across the road here like he wants to, all it's going to do is divert the water, how that ditch when it overflows, right across this yard and right into my mom's backyard. And the other thing, to add, compile to it, he's wanting to put a 230-inch whistle pipe right here on the ditch where it busts with the city property there. And this ditch here has a 25-inch tile, 252 by 24-inch tile underneath the road here, 228-inch tiles, all going in above where he's going to put those 230-inch tiles in. It don't take a civil engineer to figure out, you know, that ain't going to work on a bottleneck. And since the city has deeds to this, I just want to see if the city could stop him from closing that off, because he's already got posts all the way across there already. I talked to him several times.
Who is he?
James Pettipool.
And he's building a fence there, is that correct?
Yeah. Yeah, he's got posts already cemented in, he's got boards up on this, and this property over here, he's taken out part of the chain link fence on their property, there's nobody lives there right now, Bank of America has it on board, he's saying they got to sell and stuff. But he's taken part of their chain link fence, where they had a car gate right here, he had actually moved it over. So I think he's just more or less met mom, because mom called the cops on him for 3:00 in the morning one time playing karaoke on his carport, you know, so. Yeah, I think it's just all retaliation, because if you go down and look, it's obvious the only reason why he's doing that is just to block our access, and that's it. I mean, it serves no other purpose. The lady who had the property before, she had a fence, you know, across the backyard there, but it was on the other side of the ditch on the backyard, which makes more sense than just putting a little stringer fence there. And I thought since the city had the deed to easement to it, and plus they have the deed to property there, they can stop him from building that fence and gate.
What are the streets involved there, Charles? What are the streets involved there?
This is Claremont Lane here, South Avondale.
Okay, I guess that's what I know.
We have a lot of flooding problems down there. Like, all this here drainage here comes from up on Oak Hill and on the east side of Cemetery. Drainage here all comes off North Main and Baron Road up in that area, that little subdivision, you know, off the end of Baron Road there. All the drainage comes down through here off that, and that all goes right through here. Yeah, that's a lot of water comes through there. Like I said, if he puts a gate across there like he wants to, best case scenario, the creek overflows like it usually does, it's going to divert the water, it's going to cut right across the low area here, because that's all low line, you know, we got a problem enough without adding to the problem. You know.
I went and looked at that a couple of times, I've talked to Mr. Ogden, and, you know, we need to kind of look at it to see if there's something that we can do, because I can understand his problem. And we're not getting clear, at one time we weren't getting clear who actually owns the property in the city easements and all that, but we need to find out we sure own all of that.
Now, right here is the deed to easement, the city got in 1961 for the property, and on his deed, Mr. Pettipool's deed, it shows the easement plus the property owned by the city in that corner. So he had full knowledge who owned it before he even started, you know. And, you know, now I never had any cross words with the man, but he's always like, "Take me to court over." And, well, you know, we ain't got enough money to run $15,000, $2,000 into court, and I think it's part of the city's property was involved, and maybe the city could just say, "Hey, you guys got easement there, you don't get it, don't fence it up."
Mr. Avery, would you please come to the podium?
No, you're fine. I am aware of the circumstance on this. Tony Chilton is one of the building inspectors, and Mr. Chilton and I both spoke to you on the 11th, I believe. And we do have probably a lift station back in there. This is between Claremont and West Avondale, the area in question.
East Avondale.
East Avondale, yes.
East, yeah.
Right, because you're on the east side of Avondale, so.
Claremont.
On the east side of Claremont, down south.
The city does have a utility easement for the right of access to their lift station. In the beginning, Mr. Chilton did speak with Doug Hendricks, the Water and Superintendent, and was told that as long as they had access to it, the utility department didn't have an issue with fencing. It is, Mr. Pettipool, I didn't even know the gentleman's name, it is Mr. Pettipool's property, but it has historically been an access point for his family, and they do go across two private property owners, and the city does retain an easement across that entire expanse there. But, and we were assured that he would not block the drainage, and that if he does block the drainage, it would be an issue where he was making damage to adjoining property owners, and then action would be taken upon that. I'm familiar with the location, I know Mr. Smith has been there a few times, but I'm at the disposal of the council as to what, where you want to move with this.
I think it needs to stay how it is, and nobody needs to put a fence on that property. If it's city property, and they've lived there for that long, and it's going to cause problems with flooding possibly, I don't think we should take that risk.
Just to be clear, it's not city property?
Well, it's city easement.
It's a city easement, right, it's still the property owner, the property still belongs to the property owner, we have a right to get into that lift station. I suspect the lift station is probably, we usually get deeds to those, those are usually city property.
That would be city property, that part.
So I would think we could do something about the lift station. If he hampered our access to it, we could do something, but again, it's his property without having an easement right on it.
Technically, he does have the right to secure his property, but it does create a hardship for the gentleman here, and it is possible that it might have some other effect during a flooding event. I can't say that it would or wouldn't.
Can he put the fence on the inside of the easement, not on the outside?
That's where the original fence was, that lady, we had the property before she had her fence, and he bought this property about a year and a half ago, and, you know, they just, one of them guys.
Did you say that there was plans to put a gate up?
Yeah, yeah, he had planned to put one right across on this here line there, across the road.
So there wouldn't necessarily be access unless we had a key. I think we can definitely do something about that. If he, I don't know if he even wanted the fence, if he couldn't have a gate to have it enclosed, but, I mean, we do have a right to get in to maintain that lift station, so I think that would be an issue if we had to.
Well, our access there is just secondary to the possibility of it diverting the water out of the ditch right into the backyards there and stuff, and I was always raise a ounce for pound of here, I mean, I don't care if it is his liability, if he diverts the water, we're still going to have the damage to deal with.
What kind of fence did, you said the prior neighbor had a fence there, what kind of fence was that?
It was just a regular woven wire fence with posts up and stuff, and he's putting up a six-foot privacy fence across there, and, you know, and like I say, even the part where the line goes between mom's property and the city, I don't see where he even has a right, he can put a fence on that. I mean, they're going to be the property there that belongs to him.
The portion where the lift station's at?
Right.
Yeah, I agree with you. I think that is a portion that we.
His explanation was he wanted to keep, well, my nephews like to go down there and play in the gravel, something your kids do, and he wanted to keep the kids and the dogs off his property, you know, that was just the whole explanation, but sit there and look at the way he's doing it, the only thing he's doing is retaliating against mom for calling cops on him, and one time he's blocking off our access there, creating a problem.
Give Dennis some contact information, we'll get a hold of you and come out and look at it and see what we can do and can't do on it.
Okay, good enough.
Is there an alleyway behind there?
Do what?
Is it one that has an alleyway back there?
No, there's no alley on that side.
It kind of appears to be one, because it's just an easement for us to get in to maintain that lift station.
Well, yeah, it's a base rock road.
Yes.
Built in there, and it has piles underneath it, you know, taxpayers somewhere put money in building that road, there was no road there before. I mean, you know, that was built like in the 60s, but it's still a road that was built out to this station there, so.
There was definitely money, it was probably ratepayers if it's a utility easement, but somebody paid money to get that in there, you're absolutely right.
I'm Jim Christman, 464 North Main, and I'm here on behalf of the Iron Mountain Market down at the train station to request permission on April the 12th, when we're having a spring fling down to the depot. We'd like to have an Easter egg hunt on the east side of the railroad tracks and south of Vine Street. Asking permission for an Easter egg hunt.
This is new.
Give him permission. Let him do it.
I don't think anybody's got any trouble with Easter egg hunt for kids.
Thank you very much.
Anyone else? Next time will be the consent agenda.
You got another one.
Sorry, Mr.?
Good evening. Brought my glasses this time. My name's Greg West, I live at 1184 County Road 476, Papa Bluff, Missouri, have a business at 1919 Southwestwood Mills Iron Supply. The reason that I chose to come before the council tonight is because of the potential sale of a large asset that the city has, which is city cable, and.
That's on the agenda, Mr. West.
Okay, does that mean I'm not supposed to talk or answer?
No, you discuss it when we come to that item, on the workshop item. Well, I have a lot of time for citizens' input.
That's fine.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else have any comments or suggestions, anything that's not on the agenda? Not, the consent agenda is next, anyone wish discussing items separately, it's on the consent agenda.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion that we approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
Motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Moving on to the workshop items. Item A, the city council will discuss memorandum of understanding with the Southeast Missouri Street Crime Task Force. Chief Whiteley.
Chief Whiteley.
Mr. Mayor, Mr. Bagby, council members, I and Deputy Chief Jeff Rowland, met with Cape Girada Chief Wes Blair, Sykesville Chief Drew Juden, and Kathy Sweeney of KFSTV a few weeks ago. We focused on how we could have the most proactive approach in identifying and arresting scumbag narcotics dealers and their associates, who also commit violent street crimes and burglaries in each of our jurisdictions. Through our intelligence sharing with DEA, FBI, ATF, and the Simo Drug Task Force indicates many of the same perpetrators were traveling between Papa Bluff, Sykesville, Cape, and Charleston, hoping for anonymity in their drug dealing and various other crimes. Having the Simo Street Crimes Task Force as another available resource could help in early identification, intervention, and prosecution of these individuals. Furthermore, rest assured, we are second to no one when it comes to federal, state, and local law enforcement working together for the safety of our schools, citizens, and community. I'd like to read a quote from the Israeli police. "We learn from the past, train for the present, to be ready for the future." And I would respectfully request that this memorandum of understanding be approved tonight, and if anybody has any questions, we'd like to address those.
Any questions? I think it's a good idea, it's like a mutual aid agreement that our Department of Utilities already has, something happens here, it's a lot cheaper than hiring 10 or 20 more police officers to help us out.
That's fact. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion that we move item A to the voting session to be held tonight.
Second.
Motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item B, the city council will discuss the city's maintenance agreement with the reorganized drainage district number seven relative to easements. You'll have a copy of a plat in your packets. Bob Sutton, who is here tonight, has, is in the process of purchasing this parcel of land that used to be a daycare down off 53. There is a drainage district easement, reorganized drainage district number seven has an easement, and you can see that easement. Lone Star Road is starting from 53 at the north edge of this plat, Lone Star Road, that easement goes all the way to the other side of Lone Star Road, and if you'll look at the line, it's a little hard to see on this, but it comes down through the middle of three buildings that's located on that property. And again, this is an easement, the property still belongs to the property owner. The easement is with reorganized drainage district number seven, but the city of Papa Bluff has entered into a maintenance agreement with them that we maintain that main ditch all the way from Timmins Street down to where Pike Creek flows into it. So Jeremy Grable's here tonight also, Jeremy has met with Mr. Sutton down there, doesn't see any problem, we've been maintaining the ditch like that for several years anyway. Mr. Sutton, before he finalized his purchase, wants to be assured that the city, nor reorganized drainage district number seven, is going to come to him and say, "Hey, you need to relocate those buildings or remove them." And the buildings there, they're very nice buildings, two of them are extremely nice building, and the other one is still a very functional building. And so I think from the city tonight, he's just looking for some assurances that we can maintain this, and something documenting that we won't be going to him and asking him to remove those buildings.
I see no problem with that.
Yeah, Mr. Sutton's done a lot for the south end and continues to improve it.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion that we move item B to the voting session to be held on April 7th.
Second.
Motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item C, the city council review request from the Planning and Zoning Commission recommending approval of a request to vacate a portion of a platted undeveloped alleyway in order to join properties to the north and south of the alleyway. The applicant is AAM Rentals LLC, care of John and Jeanette Clark, 501 Oak Street.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. As you stated, AAM owns this property, and it's at the northeast corner of Davis and 14th, has one large building on it, which is a former church building, and they own lots on each side of it. It is zoned RS3, central area residential, and the size of the alley is 16 feet in width, and they are asking that a 142-foot length portion be vacated. The alley runs east and west, beginning at 14th Street, and then going east 142 feet. The alley does continue to the east, but they're not asking for that area to be vacated. There are no utilities in the alley, we've checked that, it went through planning and zoning with few questions. We have had some concerns and questions since it's come up to council. We had none at the workshop session, or the voting session in planning and zoning, though. And I have addressed concerns from a few individuals in the area. It's accessed from north 14th Street, they own the lot north of it and the lot south of it, so they would receive the entire alley width if it were vacated. We are not removing the utility easement that exists in conjunction with that platted alley, even though it's not in use at this time, if in fact it were to be needed later. We're not requesting vacation of it, and the owner is aware of that. There is a manhole at the easterly end of the alley that runs to the east, and according to the utility department and the gas companies, there are no utilities to be considered on this request. Planning and zoning and planning staff did recommend approval of this alley, recommend approval of the request to vacate the alley with no stipulations. Questions? Thank you.
No questions, that entertain a motion second to move this item to the voting session to be held April 7th.
So moves. Second.
Motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item D, the city council will discuss ways to revitalize vacant lots from the city limits. Mark Massingham, Dennis Avery, Wally, myself, most of the council has talked about these issues before. We are looking at ways, what we had talked about before was to try to have developers come in, that one of, what we have is a lot of vacant lots that aren't being maintained or taken care of. The city winds up having to take care of them, whether it's demolition of a house, or whether it's weeds and grass, and when we have to take care of them, we wind up starting accumulating liens on that property. In some cases, we have properties that have $8,000 to $10,000 worth of liens on them that are valued at $2,500. Those properties will never be back on the tax rolls and never be productive pieces of property again, the way we're operating right now. What we're kind of suggesting, I really just want to have discussion with the council tonight on, is that we take a look at, and we've looked at several approaches, whether we file a lawsuit to take possession of the property, very expensive and winds up being a very cumbersome way to deal with it also. Mark and Dennis and I have talked, and they both feel like that in 70 to 80% of the cases, the property that we're dealing with, the property owners would simply deed it over to the city. They just, they're either absent from here, or they don't have any interest in the property they've inherited or some manner. So if that would be the case, then we could clean up a lot of these, simply with them deeding the property over to the city. We do not want to be in the real estate business, but at the same time, if they do that, we could sell the property at market value to a developer and agree to discontinue the remainder of those liens if they built a structure on that house within a certain period of time, something like 18 to 24 months. If they didn't get a structure built, then the liens obviously wouldn't be removed from the property. But a very sloppy and very general synopsis of what we've been discussing in-house and just are really looking for, the last time we addressed this, we were talking about forgiving liens if something was built on the property, but there was some objection to the fact that the property owner was still going to be able to sell the property. He isn't one that hasn't maintained the property and has created the liens, and then in turn, we forgive the liens and the property owner winds up getting the money for the property. So that wasn't very attractive to anyone. So we're looking now, since we feel like that probably 70, 80% of these would just simply be deeded over to the city, then we would get at least a portion of our lien back, and over the course of time, when that property gets back on the tax roll, we wind up getting, being made whole at some point. So some thoughts, I know Dennis or Mark, do you have anything else, or Wally? And we're just looking for input from the council to see if there is something you'd like for us to bring back to you along those lines, or along any other lines that you all may have suggestions on.
Mr. Mayor, there was a lot of interest before, because we did have people come to us and wanting to buy some lots, and I know they have cleaned up several areas in town with new homes, new structures put on some of these vacant lots, so is there any way we could get an ordinance or something for us to look at, maybe table it for now and then take a look at it? But I myself would have interest in that, because I mean, it's a win-win.
What I thought with input from the council is that we would draft, actually for the next council meeting, some kind of sample ordinance, not anything to be voted on, we could make this happen over two more meetings, but some kind of sample ordinance that we would bring to you all, and then even tweak it further if it needed to be, and then possibly get something that we pass on to voting session. Mr. Avery?
And Mr. Bagby alluded somewhat to it, we're returning properties that could be viable locations for homes, and we need all the building lots we can get in Papa Bluff, and there's a variety of areas where these properties occur at. A good percentage of them occur in an area where you're going to have a smaller lot, but there is value to that because the services are in the ground that would provide water, sewer, you know, and things like that. So, you know, this does return lots to the building stock, and that's important, you know, in a town our size, we need those lots. And we did try several years ago to do some work with it, and we did a vacant house registry, and we tried that, and we really tried hard, but it didn't work that well. And so I would like to look at that aspect of the ordinances as well, to see if we can not rework our ordinance to where we can make it more cost-effective, more time-effective, and get those lots back in production. And that's all I have.
And currently, our liens go up every year with the street department, because I'm having to maintain, keep some of the weeds and stuff down the lot, so.
I've had complaints from people that have houses next to these vacant lots that are having problems, because it's causing trash and debris next door to their lot that they keep up, and it's just not fair that these vacant lots are, you know, just left to ruin.
Mr. West?
Greg West again. I didn't realize this was coming up, but I do have a vested interest in this, because you'd said, like, maybe 70% of them would be deeded back to the city. What about the other 30%? And the reason I ask that is because I'm currently in a lawsuit with the city where I bought a piece of property at tax sale, and there was a lien against it that I'd overlooked, and I had requested some information from Ms. Kirby, she got it for me, of how the city had handled it, and they'd handled it in various ways in the past. And like you said, anywhere from forgiving it to people paying it or whatever. So I'm very interested in what the city does with this, because I'm not the one that created the problem for the city, I'm the guy trying to put it back into production, but I'm being penalized for the other guy. So I'm very interested in what the city could work out for this, I would be more interested in some of the other things.
We could keep from that happening to you in the future, but you wound up buying that penalty at the same time.
I understand.
Even though you didn't, I understand, I know what you're saying, but. Even though you didn't, I understand, I know what you're saying, but that's exactly what we're trying to get away from, Greg.
Good. I want to get away from it, too.
Thank you.
No other discussion, I entertain a motion second to move this to the workshop with a possible sample ordinance at the April 7th meeting.
So moved.
Second.
Motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item E, a representative from Morris Harwell Giles Insurance Agency will appear before the council to discuss new rates for workers' compensation insurance coverage. Rhodes?
Good evening, Steve Rhodes, Morris Harwell Giles Insurance Agency here in Bluff. One thing that we can't get away from, that's everybody's favorite subject, is the insurance. Right, Susan?
That's right.
As usual, every year, we put together the program for work comp, workman's compensation for the City of Papa Bluff and for Papa Bluff Municipal Utilities. And in closing your packet that I passed out last week to Mr. Bagby, we show where we sent the City of Papa Bluff and Papa Bluff Municipal Utilities out to market to see how we were doing. Now, this year's a little bit of a special interest to us, because as you can see in the packet on the rate sheets I gave you, on the bids we received compared to what they were last year, they're up quite a bit. There are numerous reasons for that, but you'll see under the City of Papa Bluff on the front sheet, that is this sheet, they're both, City of Papa Bluff and Papa Bluff Municipal Utilities are listed on this sheet. The first column shows what you paid last year, which would be 13, 14-year through March 31st. Below that rate of $269, $204 for the City of Papa Bluff is what we call your NCCI Experience Modification. Now, that's a factor that is used by the insurance industry to either penalize you or give you credit for your losses. So what basically that means is, you want to be at a 1.00. Last year, the city was at a 1.08 factor. And basically, what that means is, they surcharge the base rate 8% of what Missouri Division of Insurance allows us to charge, the insurance industry, as a rate for each classified rate. If you look at the current NCCI rate for this year, it's gone up 19 points. Now, so instead of a 108 this year, they're going to penalize the city, and this is just the City of Papa Bluff, 27% more on the base rate than what it really should be, which is a 1.00. And the reason for that is losses. In your packet, I enclosed an NCCI report, which is very confusing to read, and I understand that, but that's the form that is sent out by this organization to the Division of Insurance to help classify each employer and their history of work comp claims. They use the three preceding years minus the current one for this report. So we've had a bad year in '12 and '13. It's so noted in the file, and it just all of a sudden hit us. Now, that bad year will stay on for two more years after this year. The way we offset that is, hopefully this year, which ends March 31st, we'll have a better year. And what I've seen so far this year, we are having a better year. But it's, and it's not unusual to have a bad year for employer, because one or two large work comp claims can throw you way out. So with that, we bid it out. You can see that we received three other bids besides the current incumbent. And you can see what their rates were. On the flip side of that, Papa Bluff Municipal Utilities has had a pretty good record. The current E-mod for them this year, this current past year, was .90. So they were given a 10% credit off the base rate of what NCCI charges. Now, this year, it's gone up nine points. They had a so-so year one year, which has now bumped into the three-year losses from NCCI. So they're at a .99, but still below a 1.00, which is very good for the classification jobs that they have. Also, we bid it out. We received three other bids. You can see what they were. And at this point, we think that we should stay at Missouri Rural Services. We've been with them since 2003. They've done a good job for us. They take care of the claims, and they've been pretty steady up until now, only because of one factor being your NCCI report factor went up. The NCCI people basically dictate the rules, the regulations, the rates, and the E-mod sheets for the insurance industry. They give those reports to the Division of Insurance with their recommendations on what to charge. This year, NCCI recommended for 2014 that the rates be increased by 11% across the board. That's basically what the Division of Insurance approved, and that's pretty much what the insurance companies that do business in the state of Missouri did. I have a list, and I enclosed emails from other insurance carriers who denied, to quote the city's business, for the simple reason that they don't do public entities. They're staying away from them. There are numerous reasons that we won't go into tonight, but with that said, I'll handle any questions that the council may have, or I do extend another invitation to any city council member who'd like to drop by my office at any time, and we'll further go into it. Now, I do have losses. I have them itemized, but due to HIPAA law, we're not allowed to give you the names of who those losses are, but I can show you some of the losses by class code and show you what we paid out on them. Any questions?
It looks like staying with the company that we are, still the low bid of the four, is that clear?
Are there any other insurance agencies in the area, in Missouri, that are capable of handling a municipality that you could go to?
Insurance agencies or companies?
Companies.
I'm going to give you-
You've got Missouri Rural Trust.
Uh-huh.
That would be a pool, right?
No.
No?
The pool is Travelers on the other end of the spectrum, which is $843,000.
Right. And that would be your last resort, probably, if you couldn't get anything else.
If you go to the market, and you don't find any insurance carrier that is admitted and doing business state of Missouri, that will write your workman's compensation, the only other area that you could go is to the state pool, which is administered by a Tramblers Insurance Company. They're the lucky guys that got the bid.
So you ran out of options, then, basically?
I got a bid from Travelers. I got a bid from Missouri Employers Mutual, and I got a bid from Insured Solutions.
Is Insured Solutions, are they a brokerage, or are they an actual insurance company?
Insured Solutions is a PEO, Professional Employment Service.
How many companies did you send?
Well, here's my list of, you want me to name them off? Here we go.
Well, you can give me a number. I think that'll-
One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, about a dozen of those. And there's a lot of insurance companies on here that do business in the state of Missouri. I'll be happy to give that to you, but they all don't do public entity business.
Right. Well, that's what I was saying, did we hit all the ones that do?
Yeah, and I'll give you an example, and I'm not picking on my law enforcement trends here, but the insurance companies are afraid of law enforcement and fire. They have the most dangerous jobs in the city as far as accidents.
Makes sense.
And it's a proven fact that they do, and there's a reason for that. So the industry's tightening on work comp, the rates are going up, underwriting's getting tighter, and we just had a bad year on the city side. We have set up safety meetings with Missouri Rural to come down to help us try to fumble through this and get going. That's all I have at this point. Any other questions?
I should just point out that Jeff did not do that on the job.
I already asked him.
I saw everybody look at his part, and it not happened on the job.
I went running to Jeff, I got here to ask him, okay, what happened? No, he did not do it on the job.
That's right.
And it's a rolling three years, so like you stated, you're going to have a bad year, you may have two good years, it's going to drop off, you hope you get three years in a row to get the rates down. It's rare to ever see them go below one, so that's amazing. Very rare.
You have the report in there that shows you each year of the last three years on the NCCI report that shows you the premium paid in, dollars paid out. And there's also a report in there that gives you the number of claims each year by the city and Public Utilities Department. But once again, I'd be happy to sit down and discuss it with you. I know you've got a lot on your plate tonight. We just wanted to bring it to your attention, and we're working on it.
There are very few companies, I don't bid, my company doesn't write public entities. There's a lot of companies that won't anymore. There's fewer and fewer at all times, because it is a high-risk area, and the price has got so much that it becomes more specialty companies, and that's what you've gone to here, so. And then the price is driven by our losses. Well, you hope no employee ever gets hurt on the job, because these are strictly work comp losses. It's not health insurance, it's work comp losses, and that's what drives the price up or down, and, you know.
We still have a claim in 2011 that's not closed. We're still working on that claim. So these claims can go on and on and on and on.
And work comp is, price is based on, they charge different for a fireman than they do for a street worker, than they do for a roofer, than they do for a clerical job. Every job is rated differently, at a different rate. So it's, there's just a lot of factors that go into it.
Anything else?
Thank you, Mr. Rhodes.
Thank you for your time.
Do you just need a consent to go forward, or?
Yes, it's a workers' comp, unless the council has a problem, wants to see other information, then just a consensus from the council to move forward.
I don't think you're going to be able to beat the rate. I would make a motion that we go forward with what we're currently carrying.
Motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Moving on to item F, the city council will review an asset purchase agreement relative to City Cable. Just repeat. Let's give us your names.
Mr. Allen Davis is here.
Well, Mayor, members of the council, my name's Allen Davis, Savannah, Georgia. I wanted to, if I could, depending on how council would like to proceed, I'd like to give you a presentation and give you an update as to the process we've engaged in for five months relative to City Cable.
That's got to be good information for the citizens to see.
Thank you, sir.
Do you want the lights down? Just a minute.
Wait just a minute, see how-
Wait just a minute, wait till they get it all hooked up. Bill, wait just a minute till they get it hooked up. Yeah, I think it was just the front lights was all they needed out. You girls want to come over here? There's three chairs over here.
Over here? Yep. This machine and I've got to know each other pretty well.
And the water bottle and the microphone.
Can everyone see that okay? Of course, Mayor and council, we have been working on this process since November, and I provided you with several updates as we moved through the process to view options, the evaluation of the system. We put together detailed projections, and then we've engaged in a process, and what I'd like to do is just talk through those steps, talk through the system, talk through where we ended up with our process, and then introduce John Brinker with new wave communications. If that's okay.
Yes, sir.
First of all, I, of course, for the benefit of those of you who don't know me, I have been in the industry for 30-plus years, and-
Do you need a microphone close to you?
Spent a time working for companies that I've owned and operated, and I was instrumental in actually working with the city when they initially decided to move forward.
They won't be able to pick up, hear you on, at home, cable, if you don't talk to the microphone?
Okay, thank you. I was instrumental in actually, the city engaged my company to actually come in and help put together the initial plan. We also supported the city through their initial financings, their capitalization, acquisition of the InStar system that was here in Papa Bluff, and we closed that transaction working with the city. And so we've had a long history with the city, going back 15 years. So when I was contacted by Bill and then, of course, Doug Bagby, I had enjoyed my working experience here and listened to what they had to say relative to the system and potential options, and I decided to come in and help the city evaluate its options, and then ultimately, after that, we engaged in a process. So I wanted to go through that with you guys now. Of course, the goals were, assess the value of the system assets and adopt a long-term plan to provide subscribers the highest level of service possible. And of course, that's consistent with the basis on which the city got into the business in the first place. Service here was absolutely horrible. It was one of the worst systems I have ever seen in my 30-year career, and it was not being maintained. The partnerships that owned the systems were out of cash, they had no capital, there was no possibility for an upgrade. They had been sold as part of a larger transaction with a company called Falcon that Charter acquired, and the system was just in terrible shape. So the service element of this was the initial motivation, and then ultimately, the city adopted a very advanced, state-of-the-art technology and architecture, hybrid fiber coax, with approximately 150, 200 home nodes, which is still state-of-the-art in the industry today. 12 fibers per node and, you know, very fiber-rich network. So service was the initial objective, and it continues to remain the objective through what we're going to discuss this evening. Of course, you, everyone's familiar with the city, obviously, but the city ultimately constructed 1066 miles of fiber between 2001 and 2002, 870 megahertz of capacity, currently has 11 full-time employees. And as I mentioned, 1999 is when we first started working on this. Business plan was approved in 2000, closed the acquisition and the financing in 2001. No need to go through this detail, everybody's familiar with the operations center. As you can, of course, when we came in to actually look at the system, one of the things that we knew was that we started out with a very good operation, very good plan, very well-structured network design, and what we found, which was not known, was the level that the system had been maintained over- that the system had been maintained over all these years. Many service providers, municipal and private, will often make an investment, and then not continue to reinvest in their system, and then also, of course, improve their operations by adding additional features, channels, HD capability, for example, increased high-speed internet capacity, all that takes resources, both in terms of personnel and operating resources and capital. The city had done a great job of maintaining its system over a period of years, and it wasn't, and it was, of course, identified as such by others, who came in to look at the system independent of me, validated by them. For those of you who may or may not know, the city passes approximately fifteen thousand five hundred potential customers in the city of Popper Bluff and Butler County, and as of the end of 2013, these are the customer counts relative to the customers that were served, sixty-two hundred seventy-one residential video, thirty-six hundred and five data, three sixty-nine commercial. This is a breakdown over time, and this is consistent with what you've seen in the industry, where there's some decrease in the number of cable TV customers, in the competition and so forth, and then an increase in the high-speed data customers as data demand continues to grow. These are the rates, obviously, channel lineup. Now, this is extremely important, I took all the financial records going back to 2011, analyzed those, built a model reflecting the, every detail relative to this system's operation, put together monthly pro forma financials for twenty-four months, ten years annually, and then ultimately, came to the 2013 pro forma, what is called EBITDA, earnings before interest taxes, depreciation, and amortization. That number at the bottom there, that one million eight sixty-eight, eight sixty-two, is the number that all systems in our industry are valued by, no matter how large or small. That is the number that every, that any acquirer, any seller will focus on relative to the value of their system, and then the value is established based upon a multiple of that number. And that's extremely important to understand, because it is an industry standard, it's been an industry standard for many decades now, and it's the basis on which this system was valued, both by me, in terms of looking at the value of the operations itself, and then also by others. Now, it's important to recognize the fact that that number can be affected by things that are behind the numbers. It can be affected by operating expenses, it can be affected by rates, and then also the value itself can be impacted by the service territory, the type of infrastructure, how much money it's gonna actually take to maybe upgrade the system, or add new services, and so forth. So that cash flow number, of course, is the bottom-line revenue that the system is generating beyond its expenses, and it is the basis for the valuation, but then other factors have to be considered when you actually come up with a true value of a system like this. Now, a process is laid out here, so we started on November the eighteenth, where we were engaged to look at options for the city, and then to come back with our findings. We went out into the marketplace at that point in time to see if there might be an interest among various companies to acquire the system. We contacted seven potential buyers. The idea was that we would work simultaneously to determine whether there's interest in the marketplace, to possibly acquire the system, and then we would also put together a valuation to establish a, an internal review of the financials, as I mentioned, and the system itself, to determine the value of the asset. Through that process, we managed that independent of the city, and then presented our findings to the city on February the third. So we contacted seven companies, some of those companies took a very high level of interest in the opportunity, they entered into non-disclosure agreements, so we could provide them information confidentially, they then, some of those companies then made offers through their letters of interest. We also established a data room, so companies could go look at various files that were available, and do due diligence on the system without having to be intrusive into the existing operations and disrupt anything here locally. So, move on down the list, we received those letters of interest, we selected the top price that was offered, granted that company an exclusivity period where they could come in and do much more thorough due diligence, including site visits, and then ultimately, that process led to a firm final offer, which was established in an asset purchase agreement, which I'm going to present to city council this evening. So, in the event the city wants to move forward to sell the system, we have the buyer represented here, New Wave Communications, we have the asset purchase agreement, and all the other associated documents drafted and ready to go, and the city has an opportunity to actually get full value, and then some for the system, and actually move on with another service provider. So, let's talk about value for a minute, and then we'll get to the actual offer price. All these transactions were private, therefore, none of the information was actually disclosed publicly, this came to me confidentially through investment bankers, but the important number to look at is that multiple there, the sales price multiple that you can see on each one of these, ranging anywhere from nine-point-three times to six-point-five times to eight-point-five times to three times. Another good example is the recently announced Comcast-Time Warner acquisition, eleven million subscribers, that is an eight-point-three times multiple transaction, so it falls right in the range of these others. This is our valuation of the system, we came in with that cash flow number, earnings before interest taxes depreciation of one million eight sixty-eight, established an eight times multiple for the system, and a value of fourteen million nine hundred and fifty thousand. These are the companies that expressed an interest in acquiring the system, the company that ended up with the best price and the best fit for the community, and the highest level of commitment as a service provider, as I mentioned earlier, is New Wave Communications, and the parent, I guess, is Rural Broadband Investments, is that correct? Seventeen million five hundred thousand dollars, which is a nine-point-three-six times Now, there's two things to keep in mind here, one is that that is a very attractive offer. It is obviously cash at closing, it's a very attractive multiple, a nine-point-three-six times, and then, as I've gotten to know, the New Wave Group over the past few months, I must say that I've been very impressed with them as service providers and operators, they have over a hundred and fifty thousand customers, they do a great job in all the areas that I've done due diligence on relative to service provisioning, the way they maintain their systems, and just simply the way they conduct themselves. There've been over thirty people working on this process with us, and just a fine group of people, I've actually enjoyed getting to know. If I might, John, would you just introduce your company briefly, and?
Sure.
Just state your name.
Good evening, council and mayor and residents of Popper Bluff, I can tell you, we're excited about the opportunity of purchasing this asset. We operate out of Dexter, Missouri, which is only twenty miles away, a corporate office is forty-five minutes away out of Sykesville. I've been working with New Wave since they acquired us back May last year, great company to work for, they are customer service focused, it's not trickle-down management, it's from the ground up, they spent a lot of money, a lot of capital, a lot of training, we have a lot of fun, we enjoy our customers, and, you know, proud to be, you know, part of Missouri and three or four other states that we operate in. But just real quick, we offer, well, we have services, as Allen said, and everything Allen said, you know, we appreciate that, because we do work hard every day, take care of our customers, we have a hundred and fifty thousand customers, roughly four hundred and fifty thousand homes passed, we're a strong provider, not only in customer service, but in corporate citizens in the communities that we operate, we have stores in a lot of our communities, this is one of the top five towns, community size that we serve, that roughly two hundred and fifty communities that we're in, so it's one of our largest acquisitions. We plan on, when we acquire this, hopefully it's gonna take us, you know, three to six months before we get everything, you know, in place, we'll have twenty-four-seven customer service, service outages, NOC support, we hope to, you know, begin to put together a plan to where you can add, you know, additional services here for the community, have high-speed data services up to fifty meg, probably offer sixty HD channels, we have a service that's gateway, we call the BOSS, you can tie all your components that you have, home, Xboxes, Playstation fours, your iPads, your iPhones, it's pretty exciting, and here tonight, just to introduce ourselves, and answer any questions that you folk, you know, may have about our operation, but like I said, we're real proud to be selected by you folks this evening, hopefully, and begin operating where you folks left off, you've done a great job, and, you know, we hope to follow in your footsteps going forward, so, thank you.
How many employees do you guys have now?
We've got, what, Stacy, over five hundred employees, I guess? What's that?
Five fifty.
Five fifty, we're hiring people all the time, we keep expanding, we've done twelve acquisitions in the last eleven months, from here down to Louisiana, to Texas, Nevada, I operate systems in Indiana, Illinois, Missouri, and the boot heel of Arkansas. I got weaned on New Wave down in Dexter, and fortunately got, when the company came on, promoted, and taken on additional responsibility, so.
Were you around back in the InStar days?
I've been around probably longer than you, Allen, but I won't. Yeah, very familiar, I've, little history on me, I've been in for thirty-seven years, and I think, I live in Evansville right now, I moved from Dexter here November last year, and I thank my wife and I, my kids, every two years we get an itch to move, I don't know why, but I think this, Indiana's probably the twenty-second state I've lived in in thirty-seven years, and been in the cable TV business all that time, and probably done a little bit of everything similar to what you've done too, so, an old cable dog, so, still enjoy it today.
Now, you remember those InStar partnerships and Falcon?
Right, right, yeah.
You can obviously appreciate, understand how motivated these folks were to bring better service to them.
Oh, absolutely, back, I worked with Daniel's Communications for years, and that's basically what we did, we put together limited partnerships, and went out and bought these rundown systems, and had a lot of good investors that put in a lot of capital, business was good in the video business back years ago, and three or four years, you know, get them up to the level they should be, and then either acquired additional systems, or we, you know, sold those, and got some more limited partnerships, worked with banks, credit unions, insurance companies, you know, anybody at the time that we, you know, would give us enough money to go out and turn those things around, so, yeah, very familiar with, you know, that's why I'm excited about this, I mean, it's an eight-seventy system, it fits perfectly to what we're doing, you know, with a New Wave, it sits perfectly geographically with Dexter, you know, ten gig of bandwidth we're working on to get in, and we'll probably have all of, in fact, we'll have all of Missouri, and the boot heel of Arkansas, over in Piggett and Marvedeuk, and Greenway and those systems, all tied together to have a common head-in, and duplicate that facility which you have here, that we will have redundancy, so services outage, service outages, loss of bandwidth will be very, very, very minimal, so reliability, you know, will be, you know, real strong, once we get everything turned around, we have to do a building conversion, we've gotta make some changes, some things that we've gotta do, but it's pretty easy to do, because you've got a great group of people, you've got a great community, you've got some great, great customers, so, I'm real pleased, in thirty-seven years, I'm real pleased, okay, with InStar and Falcon, and, you know, some of the, some of the four-letter words back in the day, so, yeah. Thank you, sir.
All right, thank you.
Well, Mayor, that's all I had, the matters before you for your consideration, we have, we've done our job, we've done what you asked us to do, and I'm happy to answer any additional questions you may have.
No questions from the council, believe, Mr. West, this is the item you want to talk on, let's start.
I think Angela's got one.
I'll let him talk first, I just, little question.
I don't think so.
Thank you again, I'd say, you need to cancel, thank you.
I think she needs your address again.
She didn't get it, yeah.
Oh, I'm sorry, Greg West, one-one-eight-four, County Road four-seven-six, Popper Bluff. Seeing this tonight, I see that, you know, obviously the council's been working on this for a while, with some folks, and it sounded like they have a lot of good things to say, as is. You know, the first official word we got of this was yesterday's Sunday paper, and I guess one of the things I have a concern on is, you have this on the workshop, eighteen million dollar asset of the city, and we're gonna turn around and vote on selling it within thirty hours of the citizens being officially aware of it, yet there's several items you've voted on tonight that you've moved to the April seventh meeting, or whatever it is, that's just a question I've got, it just seems to raise questions and red flags, I mean, it's why, what's the hurry, I guess? What's the hurry? I mean, I see it's already printed and everything on the agenda. What's the hurry?
Yes, sir.
May I? What?
Yes, sir. Davis.
Well, first of all, as everyone can appreciate, engaging in a transaction like this with a cable system with private buyers represents a lot of challenges when you're, when you are a municipal entity. None of the buyers want any of their information disclosed, they, they're extremely, in fact, you can probably back me up on this, John, I mean, you don't even typically announce a purchase price when you acquire a system, you're privately held, even the number itself being public is extremely rare in the industry for a private company like theirs. There is absolutely no way, other than just a pure auction, where you would not receive top dollar, that you can manage this process any other way than we have. And I'm not exactly sure how many meetings we've had here, but we've had a number of them. them, and we have thoroughly worked through this process and we have managed this responsibly. We have done it to the best of our ability, and I think Council can attest to that, as they've been informed and updated all the way through the process. So, these folks are the elected representatives of the city. They're trying to do what they believe is the responsible thing for the community, both in terms of the, the actual value placed on the asset and long-term sustainability of the actual system and its operations. As you can appreciate, it's extremely difficult for a service provider with 6,000 customers to maintain a system without any ability to scale over a period of time beyond what they've already done. With all the changes in the industry, with all the new customer demand and service offerings that are being requested by the communities out there, obviously a company with 150,000 subscribers plus over 500 employees can bring more resources in here than, than the city of Poplar Bluff could ever give to its citizens. So, you know, hopefully that answered your, your question, your comment.
It does make a few things maybe better understood, but it still doesn't answer my question. Is Cusco obviously as successful? And they say they have great customer service, they wouldn't be as successful if they didn't have good customer service, I'm sure of that. I'm not questioning the price. I'm not questioning the wisdom of the sale of the asset. It's just 30 hours, folks, for the citizens to be aware of this? I don't think that it would hurt anybody if it was delayed just a little bit to kind of let it soak in maybe to some of the citizens. The other thing is.
What would there be to gain if we waited?
Well, I've got, well, I tell you what, I'm glad you asked that. I was, watched the January meeting, and there was talk about, Mr. Bagby said that it's offered free to the citizens of Poplar Bluff, the programming on Channel 2 or whatever it is for the city program. Is this going to continue? Is it going to continue that the council meetings are recorded and televised? Or are we still going to have a city channel?
Absolutely. Anything that's existing today and what you're doing today, the only thing that we're suggesting that we will do is that we will add additional services, which I'm sure a lot of the customers and residents in Poplar Bluff would be interested in, that's not being carried today. I would think there's a number of businesses and people that work at home that would be interested in a 50-meg service as opposed to a 20-meg service. I would think there would be people in Poplar Bluff that would be interested in knowing they can pick the phone up, call, make a phone call at 2:00 in the morning and say, "My service is out, my internet net's not working," and get a live person on the phone that will immediately take care of that. We have NOC support that looks at our system continuously and tries to see if issues are going to happen, or indications that they may happen, that we can fix them before the customers see those. So I think there's a lot of positive things that are going on. We are not changing anything that's being carried today. There may be a few minor tweaks with respect to that, with far as the community channel or the citizens' channel or faith channel, absolutely. We work in the community, in a lot of the communities that we work in right now. We've got church services, we've got kids that do programming, we go down and do art fairs and film festivals, we have parties for the community several times a year to get the customers come out, to bring the kids. We have toys and air balloons and all these rides. We take extreme plight in being part of the community that we serve in and get involved in the community as much as we possibly can because it's our community, we're part of the citizenship in the communities that we serve.
John, I appreciate your answer, and that helps. You gotta, hopefully you can understand from a citizen's point of view, I didn't know those things. We weren't made aware of those things, and we've just had 30 hours to digest this. Didn't know that they were going to continue the, our channel, because, like I say, back in January, we were talking about that. You said that service is provided free through the city-owned cable system. Well, if it's going to go from a not-for-profit to a for-profit, which leads me to the next question, what do you think, what's your opinion of where rate increases are, where rates are going to be?
Well, I think any business today in this economy have to have rate adjustments periodically. Our biggest part of our cost is programming. I mean, it makes up probably 50 or 60% of our cost. And we have no control over ESPN, we have no control over Viacom. We don't like to have rate increases because it's very competitive out there. You've got DSL, you've got DISH, you've got DirecTV, you've got Hulu, you've got Netflix. The competitive world today, from when I started, is probably a thousand times greater than what it is. So we're sensitive to rates and the cost of adjustments. I'm not going to say, "No, we're not going to do rate increases." That's, that's a lie. I think every business in this town, the city with their utilities, has to make those adjustments in order to operate and, and pay the bills and grow the business. So yes, there, there will be rate increases as we move on down the road. That's a given. The broadcasters used to be free, we're paying them $5 or $6 a month to carry, you know, the four networks. Before, they begged us to carry it, and we did, and I guess we messed up years ago, which is, "Okay, from here until eternity, we'll carry you, but don't charge me for it." And they're charging $1, $2. I'm sure you read the paper, usually where Cox and Comcast, with CBS and Sinclair and all these programmers, you know, their rates are getting pretty aggressive. We have to pass some of that along. That's the nature of doing business, and I'm sure you're in business and you can appreciate that. But I think we have scaled with 150,000 customers, and if we acquire another 100,000 customers, you get as big as a Comcast or a Time Warner to where when you go in to negotiate these prices, you've got some leverage. It's difficult for a system with 6,000 subs to go to ESPN and say, "I don't want to pay $8 next year." Well, then you don't carry ESPN next year. Then you've got 6,000 people on your back saying, "How come you're not carrying ESPN? It's $8, I don't want to raise the rates." So, any business, that's, that's how that works. So, we have more scale than, than what the city does with respect to contract negotiation. As we acquire more customers, you know, that gets broader and broader and broader. So there is some, you know, advantages to economy of scale, you know, with a company like ours. I mean, we're not the biggest, we're, you know, the top 20 probably, probably one of the larger rural operators in the country. And we're very sensitive to that. I mean, we put together packaging and pricing to where people get two services or three services for a discount. We do 12-month campaigns, we do HSD campaigns, new customers, we may give them the second month free or maybe the first month free, because we, you know, have pride in how we deliver our service. And if they try it and see the reliability, and they get on it, you know, that's half the battle. Once we get them on, it's our responsibility to keep them on. We're very sensitive to those sorts of, sorts of those issues. But the answer to the question, "Yeah, there's going to be rate adjustments," that's, that's the nature of business today. We don't like it, we don't want to do it, we don't arbitrarily do it, we're not going to gouge a customer just so we can make money. You know, we don't do it that way. That's what I tell you.
I appreciate your answer, and thank you very much.
You're welcome.
But like I say, I know I'm not the only one, you know, the only citizen would have questions, I would think, because it just kind of shocked me that, one, it comes out in Sunday's paper, and, two, we're going to vote Monday night to sell it. I'm not saying it's not the right thing to do. I'm not saying it's not a good price. I'm not saying these fellows haven't done a good job. But guys, that's pretty fast.
Do you currently have city cable?
No, Susan, you know I live outside the city.
So, why are you the spokesperson?
I don't know that I am the spokesperson, but I am a citizen, and I do pay a hell of a lot of taxes in the city.
But you don't pay anything to my city cable. Your life won't change if we sell it tonight or in two weeks.
No, this gentleman right here just talked about 50 meg of internet. I'm at one of those 350 business internet customers.
Okay.
So, are you trying to say I don't have a say here? Why, what's the point of your question? What's your point of your question to ask me if I'm the spokesperson?
Why, if you don't have my city cable, are you worried if we don't sell it tonight and wait two weeks? And you still didn't answer my question, what would be the difference if we waited? What, what would be the benefit to waiting two weeks?
What would be the negative? I don't see, I don't, I think there would be other cust, other citizens that might have some questions. Ms. Abishir was around whenever we first set up the city cable and, and brought it in, and we thought it was a good plan at that time. I'm not saying this isn't a good plan to sell it now. I'm just saying sometimes a little bit of patience might pay off if we had another question or something. Two, the customers that the council serves, that these gentlemen serve, just to have a, maybe a little better feeling about it, because like I say, personally, 30 hours and you're selling an $18 million asset? How many have you been involved?
We've been working on this for five months.
No. How many have you been involved in selling such a large asset or buying such a large asset? I think Councilwoman Abishir is the only one that was on the council at that time.
Johnny was.
Johnny, Mayor.
Johnny was.
Okay. That's a pretty large undertaking.
Doug was at utilities.
Not on the council.
Not on the council.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
You're, you're talking about, just coming out in the paper yesterday, and I guess I'm totally amazed that this council chamber isn't totally packed this evening, and I received one call today. So where are all the concerned citizens?
And I think normally to, is all workshop items come out at the same time. Some workshop items are voted on the same night. Generally, if we have a workshop item that the council knows absolutely nothing about, kind of what the workshop is for, it's for public input, which we're having tonight, and it's to make sure the council has a handle on what it is they're dealing with. We've been dealing with this since November. So there, there's not a learning curve that the council needs to have, the people that you elect to make those decisions for you. They've already been through that learning curve. We're having the workshop session tonight to hear you, Greg, and to hear exactly what the folks want to say. So, but we never have a workshop meeting that is scheduled a long time, and I understand it's voting that you're talking about, but it comes out 30 hours before every workshop meeting.
I understand the workshop part, but you've got a motion to move it to a voting session tonight. I have a problem with that.
I, I understand that, but as I said, most of that has to do with it's the first time the council has gotten that information. This is not the case with this. We have been working on this, and as we've talked about previously, you're dealing with a private entity if we were dealing with a public entity that was looking to purchase it. You've got the same thing. You can't negotiate in the newspaper or on TV, you have to do those things.
And I agree with that 100%. I'm just asking for a little respect of the citizens that did elect this board to let it move in a normal procedure. We have workshop, and you vote on it, it's the next meeting. And Ms. Abishir, you may not get another call, I don't know. But I just think that that would be in the best interest of the city. I'm not telling you, I, I would love to have what this gentleman's talking about, that sounds great, but I don't think that a little patience would be unwarranted for the other folks.
Okay, just.
I received two phone calls and visited with both of them. I think one of them's in the audience, maybe both of them are in the audience tonight. And after I visited with them, they seemed to be okay. They still wanted to hear what we got to see tonight, they wanted a full presentation, and I invited them to be sure and come to the council meeting. It was going to be televised as well, so all the citizens can see it. And, but I've had many more phone calls on a lot lesser things than this sale of this cable. I don't think the price is going to go up if we wait two weeks. These people are anxious to get started, there's new jobs to be had, there's, there's better services for our citizens. I don't know why we wouldn't want to move forward with it. If I'd had 50 phone calls, it might be a different story, but I've had two.
I understand, but I've been on boards before too.
And one of them was the same person that, that Ms. Abishir and I spoke with.
And, and the thing of it is, it's, the board's on there, is the motion to suspend the rules and move this to a voting session tonight. I don't know exactly how the city does it, but my personal opinion is if you went, just like you did, the other items that you, Councilwoman Williams, moved, you approved and moved to the voting session for the next meeting.
We have some that we workshop tonight and we're voting tonight as well.
I understand.
Yeah, there's, there's both.
But this is a large item, and that was the reason for my question.
Some of the other things that we've done recently, I think, was Harps and Dexter BBQ. Both of those businesses wanted to open in town, and they requested that we workshop and vote at the same night so they could get back and get in business and provide a service to the community and jobs.
The city didn't own those assets. It's a little different. This, this is owned by the citizens.
Yes.
I'm just asking for a little time for the citizens to absorb. You know, I don't know about you folks, but there, I go for sometimes weeks at a time. I don't read the paper, okay? So, that's, that's all I'm here for. I'm not telling you folks it's a bad plan. It sounds great, and I appreciate the due diligence of the council, and this gentleman here has worked on, and, so, that was my concern.
Okay. Thank you, sir. You have, yes, sir.
Mayor, Council, I just want to say, I'll leave my cell phone.
If you have any calls from, you know, any of your residents that may have a question about New Wave and, you know, how we conduct business, or, you know, anything, I'd be more than happy to, to do that, and, and they can give me a call anytime. I enjoy talking to my customers. You find out what's going on when you, you know, when you have conversations with people. So if, if they do, I'd be more than happy to answer any questions that they may have. But I think it's very important that we get this business conducted this evening, as this young lady said, it's, it's important to us, there's a lot of time, a lot of money's been spent. I know you folks here worked really hard to make, I think, an excellent decision, not that I'm biased. I really do. And I know Alan for a while, and I know he's put a lot of work in it too, so it's very important to us. I think it's very important to the customers and the residents of Poplar Bluff, because we, we can offer some services similar to what you folks did and maybe improve on some of those ways moving forward, okay? Thank you very much for your time this evening.
I would like to say one more thing that I, I should have said earlier and I just forgot to, and that is that, as you can appreciate, when, when a transaction like this occurs, there is a fairly involved transition period where the, the purchaser and the seller have to work together to actually transition those customers over to the, the new service provider. If the council takes action tonight and we do close the transaction, it will be several months before the purchaser can actually take over complete operation of the system. So they'll be working hand in hand with the city and Poplar Bluff Municipal Utilities to cause that to happen for the benefit of the customers. They are first and foremost here relative to the priority, those customers are going to be accommodated through the transition plan that we've spent weeks putting together. And, and I think that, that both the, the information John's provided this evening and the extent we've gone to, to accommodate the customers through this transition plan should at least be noted. Thank you.
Thank you.
I think you have another one over here. Angela would be next.
Okay.
She's been waiting.
Hi, I'm Angela White. I live on Neat Street in Poplar Bluff. I am a city cable customer, and my concerns are, are just as Mr. West had pointed out, that city cable belongs to the citizens of Poplar Bluff, that we had to vote on it to decide to go into business for a cable service. I just, I didn't know that we were unhappy running a cable service. I like my cable, you know, I think they do a fine job. So my question is, you know, why, also, why do we have to go through, you know, a workshop and then vote on it tonight when the citizens of the, of Poplar Bluff are the ones who own the city cable? I don't know why it's for sale. Is it not profitable? If, is it just something we want to divest ourselves of? Where are the profits going to go from the sale? What's going to happen to the city cable employees? Things like that. I think if I can kind of pretend, you know, pretend like I know what Mr. West is thinking about, those kind of questions that the city would like to, you know, citizens would like to know about. Everybody wants good service at a reasonable price, that sounds wonderful to me. I think that, you know, some of the things that I brought up are just what most folks would want to know, is why are we selling? What are we going to do with profits? What's going to happen with our employees? Are our rates going to go up? Are our services going to get better? I guess it's more of a, a PR time. Does that make any sense?
That's a very good question.
Thank you.
And I just think in general, a 6,000-sub provider is, that used to be a 75 to 7600-sub provider, is just, we're seeing what's happening. We either need to be in acquire or we need to be acquired, and I think that's where it came from. We were giving very informal quotes early on that, and since I've been at utilities and here. and here, since 2001, when we launched our cable system, we've had about four to five different offers. None of them would cover our, the remainder bond payments. This offer, as Alan Davis talked about, is a very attractive offer. It completely reduces the general obligation, not revenue bonds, the general obligation bonds, that this system does start to go under, the people in the audience and the people around this table wind up paying for it. These are not revenue bonds. These are general obligation bonds, and that's why we had to vote. We could have done revenue bonds, and there wasn't a vote required. We voted on the financing. General obligation bonds were the very cheapest means of financing this system. We got two things done when we voted. We wound up finding whether the people really wanted it or not, and we financed in the cheapest manner possible. So, you know, we're at a point where we think, at least, with help from the other individuals, that we're at a crossroads where we have an opportunity that we think is going to serve our citizens much, much better than we're going to be able to do it in the future.
I don't know if you noticed on one of the slides, it couldn't come up, Mr. Johnson, but it showed some of the cable subscribers, the numbers dropping. This, my understanding, we're going to have more channels available, and what everybody wants faster internet, and that's real quick. It cost us a lot of money, and with us doing it, then as much money as we'd have to spend, the rates would go up quite considerably to give you that same thing that we understand these people are going to be able to do at the cost of purchasing it from us. Mr. Johnson?
David Johnson, fourteen twenty-six Cypher Drive, Poplar Bluff. I have just one question. This morning at the coffee shop, it was really roaring, and I was come here and I said, would you ask this question? What's going to happen to the City Cable employees? I don't think that's been addressed tonight.
This is an asset purchase agreement. They are purchasing assets of the cable system. We have some employees that we're going to retain. I think they have some employees that they're very interested. They'll all be able to apply at some point in the future. It's just what they're purchasing from us is City Cable's assets.
Okay. Is any of the City Cable employees going to lose their job? That was the question.
I have no idea.
Okay. But I might, I would have just asked to ask that question tonight, so that's what I'm doing.
I don't know that I'm not going to lose my job at some point in the next, so I mean, I don't know. They're going to have the ability to apply with them. I think we're looking at probably, I don't know where Bill's at, probably three employees, Bill?
Two for sure.
Two for sure, possibly three that we're retaining. And I know that they're interested in some and that everybody that's working for us. Now, the big, the main question is, nothing's going to happen tomorrow.
Well, I realize that.
Right. And they're going to have a chance to reapply to this same position.
But some of the employees that work for the company were just talking to me, that they said they've been here since the beginning. They've invested in the community, they've bought houses and stuff, and they're just concerned about their job. So that's the reason why I ask. Thank you kindly for your time.
It is my understanding that the new company is going to look at growth, maybe possibly making this a hub, adding more employees. And when you go to a larger company away from working for a municipal, they have a lot of benefits that the city can't offer. They'll have 401K plans, they'll have longevity, they'll have transfer pans, maybe they want to move twenty-two times or twenty-two states. I mean, they'll have opportunities they would never have had with our small group. And the industry that we're in now is declining because of DirecTVs and Dish and such, and we went from seventy-five hundred customers to six thousand, and as that number drops and our purchase of services that the people want goes up, then our price is going to have to go up because we can only spread it so far. So when you have lesser people, lesser service, people buying from us, then that has to be spread across them. When we join with this other company, they've got a hundred and fifty thousand subscribers plus our six thousand, plus they will probably grow back up to another seventy-five hundred or whatever. If there's a rate increase, when you spread that over nearly two hundred thousand people, it's pennies opposed to dollars, many dollars with us on a small scale. So in the big pictures, there's a lot more opportunity and probably not as much rate increase as much as what we've had to, and we are going to endure over the next few years because technology is growing so fast, it's hard to keep up. We have to buy new equipment all the time, and then Bill has to come back and ask for more money, and then we have to face the citizens, say we have to have an increase. It's just, it's a catch-22. And we've had a Cadillac product that we have used for fourteen years, and it's served us well, and now we're going to be able to sell it for more than we paid for it. You don't find that very often.
Right. I understand all that, and I've been a cable subscriber since day one.
Me, too.
You know, I understand I've had excellent service.
Yes.
But the employees are concerned about their jobs, and that's what they'd like to answer. So that was the reason why I came up here.
And it's a very good question, but they will have a lot more opportunity with where, with the new company over the course of the next few months and years than they would have ever had with us.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson.
Good evening, Mayor, council members. My name is Patrick Lynch. I'm a business representative with the Operating Engineers Local 148. We represent those cable techs at the cable department. We represent those cable installer techs at the cable department and the warehouse coordinators. I started getting some calls some time ago about the rumor that was going on. I made a couple of calls to a couple of the managers here, and typical response, I guess, well, Pat, I know as much as you do, and I accept that. We'll keep you in the loop. So I got a call yesterday, yeah, it was in the front page of the paper, so that's why I'm here. The calls, when I did get them, I tried to assure those members that we have, those employees at the cable department, I tried to assure them that we do have successor language in our agreement, that if the city ever transfers or sells, that that agreement stays in place till the expiration of that, which is December 31st of 2015. I've, you know, as you can imagine, this is their livelihood. They have, of course, concerns of their pensions, their wages, their medical coverage. Some of you, maybe all of you, are aware, there's an employee of the cable who's got a very, very, very sick daughter going through treatments, not only this state but numerous other states. That's got to be weighing on his mind tonight. Looking at the copy of, that was on the table here, of the bill and whatnot, and I see, you know, that Rural Broadband was the consultant, and I see, it says, "The sale to telecommunications management LLC." I don't see New Wave on here anywhere. Is that the same?
New Wave is the same company.
Same company, okay.
Rural Broadband Investments, parent company.
Didn't see that name anywhere.
And Rural Broadband LLC is a completely different company.
Okay. Very good. Also in here, I see it says, you know, "The sale by the city to telecommunications management, all assets comprising city's cable system." Are you considering those employees' assets of that department?
No, this is an asset purchase agreement.
So you don't consider the?
Oh, you consider them assets, but that's not what an asset agreement is, and you know that.
I'm just asking.
Yeah, it doesn't cover employees, an asset sale doesn't.
I only got done with slavery many, many years ago, but it's just accident.
Okay.
You know, you're, these guys have been, put it in a metaphor, tied up in a boat, tied to the dock. You kind of just threw the boat, the rope into the boat and shoved them away for the dock with no oars, seems like. Well, I take that back, let me step back. I guess I'm one of the oars to try and fight on their behalf. So I'm going to put Mr. Brinker on the spot here tonight, and I don't know if you were aware, that we have successor language in our agreement that is binding in court now per State of Missouri Supreme Court rulings. You have some of these cable employees in the audience here, will you make a commitment to bring those employees on?
May I ask a question? Sure. First of all, back to the, to the union contract, it's been thoroughly reviewed by all parties. And out of the eleven employees there, how many employees are we talking about?
I think we represent seven.
Seven? Okay.
The field.
Field techs.
We don't have anyone in the office, per se, or in the utility office, the ladies that?
Is that correct, Bill?
Five.
Five? Okay, five. Okay, thank you.
I'm not, I'm not sure of your point of asking how many.
I just wanted to know how many were affected by the union contract and how many people you were representing here.
No one can.
Well, there's, I think there was two new, is there seven total, Troy, I think it is?
Yep.
Under, under the classifications that we represent.
Thank you, Steve.
Okay, six. So, Mr. Brinker, I have a question.
No, we're committed to work through, you know, the employee issues as quick as we can. We've got, you know, waiting on the city.
Sure.
To make their decision. I can't do anything until the draft action closes April 1st, but like I said, you know, committed to work through employees' issues, and if we get this thing closed, and hopefully get that done within, you know, thirty days after acquisition. As Alan said, we have a TSA agreement that, you know, for the first, at least, six months or so, depending on the city and their facilities, we're going to utilize the employees that are there through that transition, so.
Very good. So would you recognize that our organization might have a vested interest in this transaction?
Sir, I don't know anything about your organization.
Okay, very good.
Or about your union, or about your contract. I have no legal expertise.
Well, I would hope that the?
And I'm not going to, you know, sit here in front of the council and you and have you force me into making a decision that I'm not capable of answering.
You answered it, sir.
That's all I can tell you.
Very good. Also in the draft, Bill, you have marked, attached here, too, marked Exhibit A. Could I get a copy of that? What is Exhibit A?
We'll have to make copies. It's, I assume, Alan, Exhibit A is the?
The asset.
Asset purchase agreement. We'll have to make a copy of that.
Yeah, it'll all be a matter of public record once it's executed.
Yeah.
After it's done.
Yeah, after helping to deal with.
After it's done.
Well, having heard that and said that, I'm going to request Council Two to put this off to the next voting session, just to get some answers to some questions. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I, I am very excited about what New Wave wants to do in our community, and I want to see the changes for the citizens, better, better services and whatnot. But we have had so many different people come up here tonight expressing some concerns, and I, I feel like I need to, more time myself to review some of the information. I would like to make a motion that we do move this item to the voting session to be held on April 7th rather than tonight, so that we have more time to digest it and citizens have more time to look into it and research what's, what's out there. And I think it'll still pass, honestly, but maybe, maybe, I think it would just be a good thing for them to, to have that available.
Okay, I believe we got another citizen. Can we hold your motion for just a minute?
Sure.
Thank you. I'm Brian Becker from Highway 49, Williamsville. Own and operate Bluff Technologies and Simo.net here in the city of Poplar Bluff. First of all, New Wave, I've worked with them for a number of years back in the early 2000. They're a great company and highly respect them. Sorry, if I have a microphone and I'm not singing, I get very nervous, so, sorry about that. Second, second is, the seventeen million dollars, it was kind of asked but not answered. Does that seventeen million dollars go after the bonds are covered? Does that seventeen million dollars go into Municipal Utilities accounts, or does it go back into the city accounts once the, the bonds are cleared?
Well, the cable company is a city asset.
So?
The city does owe Municipal Utilities.
Right.
A certain portion, and the accounting will be done on that.
Okay, so the excess funds will go back into the city account rather than utilities? Because they're?
Except what we owe utilities.
Right. Okay. Secondarily, or third, I guess, the EBITDA that you were discussing, would you agree that somewhere in the last two years, we've been at about twenty-three percent or twenty-four percent of revenue, when, when you look at it EBITDA specifically as a, as a percentage of revenue? I think 1.888 was what you said, and the total revenue for, I haven't seen 2013 numbers. I know it was twenty-four percent was in 2012. Earnings were six point seven million, and the EBITDA was 1.6 million, so it ended up to be about twenty-four percent. Is that about what it was in 2013 as well?
Actually, the percentage of revenues has no bearing on valuation of the asset.
Well, it doesn't from your perspective.
And it has to be valued at a current number, which we set at year end 2013. So, I mean, the value is what it is today, not what it was yesterday, or last week, or ten years ago. It's what it is now.
Right.
And that's what we've established.
Well, I'm pretty confident in the twenty-four, twenty-five percent range. Any cable company worth their salt is going to be at about forty percent EBITDA. I'm sure New Wave is very close to the forty percent EBITDA margin. In other words, what you're using, the expenses of the city are definitely high. It lowers, because we're a city, city public entity, it lowers our EBITDA dollar value because the city's not here to make profits. And so for that reason, our revenues aren't set for making profits, our expenses aren't cut for making profits. So a municipality's EBITDA numbers are very good for the buyer to use a multiple on. So I don't, you know, the four transactions that you showed, I'm not sure were any of those transactions publicly held municipal transactions.
Well, first of all, there's no point to your statements because it is, it's worth what it's worth. There's no difference in the city owning a piece of land and you owning a piece of land relative to its value. It's exactly the same concept within our industry. So it is worth what it is worth. It has no bearing on the revenues and a percentage or a municipality being able to operate efficiently or not. It's simply worth what it's worth, and it's worth what its cash flow can generate relative to a multiple. But the value of the assets relative to their, the way they've been managed and the way they've been upgraded and the way they've been maintained over a period of time, also the technology that's incorporated in those, in that system, it's a significantly different system in a lot of ways than it was in 2000, in 2001.
Absolutely. We've gone through three CMTS during that period.
They've gone through a digital upgrade.
Yes.
There's additional data capacity, that means equipment, that means additional capabilities. So anyway, it is what it is.
It is, no, I totally agree.
The value is what it's.
I totally agree, it is what it is. But it is a municipality-owned transaction. A municipality doesn't try to push EBITDA to the highest value possible. Actually, a municipality doesn't need to do that because if it ran its businesses, like the streets, as a profit center, then we'd have toll roads everywhere. So we can't base a municipally-owned facility and use private equity calculations in order to give us a value of our network. And that's where I have a problem with your numbers, unless you're providing transactions of other publicly purchased network systems, not privately purchased. And I will promise you that if you look at strictly publicly sold transactions, the EBITDA values are totally different. And that's, that's my concern, is seventeen point five millions, that's a great number, but I believe that that's lower because we've not run City Cable to make a profit. We've run City Cable to be a great service, which it has been. Dave Presley is a phenomenal engineer, and I, we are blessed to have him. It has been run not to make a profit. EBITDA values? EBITDA values are based off, here's how much profits we've made, and because we've made these profits, that's how valuable, that's how valuable we are. When you have a municipally-owned entity that's not profit-driven, you're using false numbers for the evaluation.
Are you saying the 17.5 is not a good number?
I'm saying it is.
What are you...
I'm saying it's very possibly too low for the value of the asset that you are selling. For 266 miles of fiber...
I read your blog on March 16th.
Appreciate that.
You know, it's worth 40 million. I also read a letter that you sent to the Attorney General's Office on March 12th, four days earlier, and the first two sentences say, "Hello, Brenda, the city of Popper Bluff is selling the telecommunications network. The asset is probably worth a little more than $10 million."
Mm-hmm.
Now, you went from $10 million to $40 million in three days.
In, first of all...
I mean, that's what it says.
Absolutely, that's what it says.
Yeah.
Because at that point in time, it wasn't about valuing it.
At that point in time, this number fit your agenda. It didn't fit your agenda a few days later when you had the other information.
Absolutely not. It fit, the agenda at that point was to say, "We have an asset of more than $10 million. Is it possible that we can have an asset that's bonded publicly, that is owned by the citizens, and yet we are not as an, as a entity doing it as a public transaction with public knowledge?" With Exhibit A, I've asked for Exhibit A on a couple of occasions from different people. Exhibit A has not been provided. Because Exhibit A has not been provided, it's possible, Mr. Duncan, that the council may be breaking the law if you pass it, just a second, if you pass it tonight.
No, that's not possible.
Just a second. If you look at the statutes of Popper Bluff, the ordinance must be available for review prior to the start of the meeting. If the ordinance has an exhibit that's not been available prior to the beginning of the meeting, it is not a legal ordinance. I don't believe that you have provided the council, the citizens, or the television viewers a legal ordinance because it's not fully contained prior to the beginning of the meeting. Thank you.
Counsel, that's strictly his opinion. The ordinance is what it is, and there's been no violation, and that's all that needs to be said about that.
Just had a quick question. And Dave Presley, by the way, he's a great guy. He's taught me more about the cable system than I ever knew, which, by the way, I am an advocate of city cable, but I am an adversary of all the dish people. I have some rental units, and city cable has been great. The dish people are horrible. I've had dishes mounted in the middle of roofs, I've had ceilings fall in.
Yes.
Thank you. The city cable, I mean, Dave taught me what wall fishes were and all this other stuff, and we worked for them to get good system. But the question I had was, the motion was to sell the assets of the city. My question is, the, you mentioned the head end, you're going to have the dual head ends in case you have outages or whatever.
Yes.
Redundancy.
Yes.
Does that mean that we're selling the city building up there too with it?
The office building.
The office building, you know?
Yes.
Okay.
Where the head ends at.
And Jim Prisman, 464 North Main. And I believe Nancy Pelosi has been here tonight. We've got, we've got to pass this before we know what's in it. And that really is, is my concern. I don't believe that the city should own a cable company. I don't think that is, I don't think we should own a bus company. There's a lot of things we should not own. But having said that, it troubles me a great deal that it's happening so fast. And I would point out that our city council is notorious for making very unpopular decisions when you look at it under the microscope. I believe there was an old post office down on Broadway in 1975 that got torn down. I bet you that that wouldn't, that building wouldn't be torn down if it came to a vote before the city today. How about the swimming pool in the Colosseum that I believe is four foot too short to have sanctioned competitions? That was something that was passed by the city council. How about the location of the Colosseum, where you have to be part Billy Goat to walk up to it? A few weeks ago, you passed an ordinance giving priority to local bidders. I don't know whether or not we have anyone local that is capable of putting this together or not, but I certainly would like to have more than 30 hours to have that possibility that local people could look at it and at least be part of it. One thing that does concern me is the valuation, and I understand it's so much times the number of subscribers. And the number of subscribers has dropped from 7,500 to 6,000. Does that mean that the value of this company has dropped in the last two years by some $2 million or so? The jobs in the city is a concern, but I would like to ask, and where did he go?
He had to go to the bathroom.
Take a break.
I would like to ask one question of him.
He'll be back. He had to go to the bathroom.
And that is, maybe someone else in the, in his group can answer it, but would a two-week delay kill this deal? That is a question I'd like for him to answer.
Thank you.
Did Johnny go? He left his coat.
I guess, yes. He showed his phones, I think he had a, he was on call.
Just wait a minute.
Wait till Councilman Smith returns.
We're not a vote, we gotta wait.
Yeah.
We gotta wait till one of them comes back. We're losing council members now. The price is going down. They can hear me laughing out there. We don't have a, we don't have a quorum now. Do you want to take a break? Just hold?
No, he should be back in just a few minutes. Going outside.
Keep us on your prayer list. I said, keep us on your prayer list.
He's doing great. He just got moved to Dallas, Texas. I'll come by and visit with you.
Oh, I love that.
Yeah, I can testify if you vote too. I'll bring you. Thank you so much.
Oh, there is? There you go.
Okay, where were we?
Okay. Anyone else wish to speak, I think Ms. Councilwoman Pearson.
He asked.
Oh, okay.
I would like to answer my question.
He, he's back now. Would you like to ask it to him again? He wasn't here when you asked.
My question is, would a two-week delay in this vote tonight kill the deal?
Well, I think it, I guess the best way for me to answer that, and if Alan was here, he could probably do that better than I have.
We need Alan back.
I know we've got everything set, we're ready to move on this, documents have been prepared. There's costs associated, I would think, with delaying it. I know that, you know, there's a lot of things that we have to get in place and get moving on. I think you folks have spent a great deal of time, I think the presentation. I strongly believe everything's, all the questions that were asked this evening by the residents of Popper Bluff are pretty much answered, I think, with the presentation that Alan did, I think some of the conversations I had with these gentlemen and this young lady. So, I really, you know, believe that the company would like to move on this as quickly as we can because of where you started out with and where you're at this evening. A lot of time, a lot of energy, a lot of expense, and, you know, I'm one to move on things as quickly as I can, get them off my plate, and, you know, move on to the next adventure. So, Alan, you may want to address that as well.
Sure. Well, first and foremost, as everyone can appreciate, especially this council, as you've mentioned, we have been working on this for five months. The purchaser has been working on this now for over three months, actually four months, Relative to timing, it's extremely important that the transaction close on the first of the month, so that there can be a clean transition over to the purchaser with a, with a first-of-the-month begin date. All the work has been done relative to closing this transaction, subject to the asset purchase agreement being executed by the mayor, subject to an ordinance being adopted by this council, and the money being wired to the city of Popper Bluff's account on April the 1st. All the work's been done. All the supports, resources are staged and ready to go relative to coming in and taking over, and beginning to take over operations. All the billing, all the customer service, all the tech support, all the operational elements are in place right now and positioned, are ready to proceed on the timeline that we've established. If we disrupt that, obviously, the first-of-the-month element is extremely important, and that is going to create problems. If we, if we put a stop to all of the momentum that we have built now relative to the, all the parts and pieces in motion, and all the people that are working on this, and there are, there are a number of them, as I mentioned, I'm working currently with 34 folks that are all engaged in helping support this transaction. We put all that on hold, and then it's going to create significant harm to the process, and it may in fact cause the, the deal to not close. That's a simple fact.
Okay, and like I said, you know, some people just saw this in yesterday's paper. My wife was one of them, so, and that's, that's hard to do a lot of times, but the things in closed session have to stay there. And we didn't take any votes on closed session, but I think it was a total agreement that whenever this thing went through, we were told early that it was possibly be a workshop and voting session in one night. And just my opinion from conversations outside of that, that this was a good step for the city, for the citizens, to get better television, faster internet, and a time when it's going to start costing the municipality a lot more to try to even start to do that, and it was, this was the best time for us to take that step and make that improvement for the citizens of Popper Bluff. Saying that, I believe, Councilwoman, do you have a motion that you wanted to present?
I just had a motion that we wait for two weeks, and I, I made the motion because I wanted more time to review some of the stuff that we've gone over the last five months. As you all know, I'm kind of particular when it comes to my council packets, and I felt like I needed a few more things in there. I wanted to review the bond, there was, the original bond, there was over 200 pages in it, I just got it this morning. I wanted to see the, the contract. I don't have it in front of me right now at all, and I, I felt like I need to see that, you know? I feel like that this is such a large, a large sale that we have to make sure that it's something that we, even if we support it, we have to make sure that we are making the best possible decision, and that means looking at every single thing that we need to look at to make an informed decision. If someone were to ask me some questions right now, or beforehand, I probably wouldn't have been able to answer some of them until they were answered tonight, and I'm thankful for that. But I have to wonder how many citizens out there have more questions, and we probably need to, we probably need to address some of that, you know?
Up until tonight, all that was in closed session, so if anyone asked you a question, you weren't allowed to answer them anyway.
Right, right, but it was, once it was in open, if someone were to ask, I wouldn't have known. That's what I'm trying to say. I did not, I do not, that's why I wanted to see the information in my packets, so that I could review it before we came here and made the final decision. And I have been very supportive of it, because I want faster internet in the city. That's one of the biggest things on my list. I, I want better service. We've got too many constituents upset, and I feel like we need, we owe that to them to try and give them better service. But at the same time, you've got a lot of people that are still really happy, they're worried about their rate's going to go up. I had one, one lady ask a question, she said, "Are my taxes going to go down if you guys pay off that bond?" Does anyone know the answer to that? I'm guessing they will. No?
She's not being taxed on the bond right now. The only way she would be taxed on the bond is as a general obligation bond. If we weren't able to meet revenue requirements, it would be a special tax to the city.
Okay, so some of them asked me a few questions like that, and I want to be able to answer those, and I don't want to cause them any problems, you know, but at the same time, I feel like we're vote, we were voted in to make sure that we're making the best decisions that they feel comfortable with us doing, and so that's why I made the motion. And I do stand by it, unless it's just going to absolutely kill the deal. And if we've been doing this for five months, I highly doubt that two more weeks to give the citizens some...
You could lose the deal. They could back out at any given moment.
She has a motion then to postpone it for two weeks. Do I hear a second?
I have a question.
Just a minute, please. No seconds, so that motion will fail for a lack of a second. Yes, ma'am.
I was just wondering if maybe we couldn't have a win-win for everyone, and from time to time, city council has had like a special session, maybe instead of two weeks, because I understand the importance of starting at the first of the month and fiscal records and whatnot, and would it be reasonable to say, have a vote next Monday? Give the citizens opportunity to digest some of the information that David has taken down tonight for the newspaper, and have our city council representatives talk with their constituents? Would, and then that would also be a vote before the end of the calendar? Is that possible? Would someone like to make a motion?
I would make it, but I don't think anyone's going to second me. I make a motion that we move, that we have a special council meeting to vote on this item at a later date. Let's see.
Have a motion to...
By the end of the month, so that they have the April 1st date to open.
For a special council meeting at the end of the month to discuss this or vote on it? Do I hear a second? Motion fails for a lack of a second.
As Alan stated, it would, as Alan stated, it would cost more if you, if it didn't go forward today. Every day that it doesn't stay on track, the track that they started us on back in November, is going to cost more.
I'm Peter Tensley, 2722 North Main. My question is, and I question, you talk about five months so long, I've never handled a $17 million deal, but I've been in home closings, it's taken three or four months, and I don't, keep talking five months is an awful long time for this. I question that. But my big question is, what's in Attachment A? How come nobody has seen Attachment A?
It's the asset purchase agreement. It purchases the assets of the cable company.
Peter, I've seen it.
Don't you think that the council members should see it before they vote on it?
I think so. Are we going to get to see that?
Why have you held it?
Are you talking to me?
She's requested it. We've all requested it.
I haven't, I haven't held it, I don't have it in my position. The city attorney had it and reviewed it with our consultant.
So...
And I've just seen drafts, you know, the, it's, it's still being, it was a revised document, was still being revised even over the weekend.
It's still being revised, and you're wanting to...
No, 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 no. It's not now.
No, 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 no.
Actually, legally and technically, the document won't be, won't be finalized until closing on the 31st of March, with the subsequent wiring of the money on April the 1st. So, it's not actually, it's still being in draft form until it's executed and closed out finally on that date.
Well, I could understand the money being, you know, it's going to be wired and stuff like that.
But it's not final. Laurie, you said you're in there...
So, can't see the details of it? We ask if the building goes with it. Nobody knows if the building, what assets go?
It was literally a draft form, and it's not, it's not actually a, it's not actually a public document until it's accepted by and approved by the council.
Which we haven't gotten...
Which we haven't gotten approved yet.
They have to approve it without seeing it.
They'll, they'll, they'll approve it, they can see it, and it won't be filed until the closing, which is on March the thirty-first, the way it's set now.
But once they approve it, it goes into closing. You're asking them to approve...
Assuming the party's closed on the thirty-first.
You're asking them to approve the document they haven't seen.
Wally, have you reviewed the document?
I have reviewed the document.
And he's advised the council that it's, okay.
So the council is going to approve the contract on your word that it's a good...
Said yeah.
Yes.
Well, they haven't asked me anything about it yet.
We haven't approved it.
They haven't approved it yet.
Well, once they approve it, there's no stopping it. Right?
Once they approve the ordinance, then, as he told you, the process is going to continue, the process to...
We don't know the details of the process.
I pardon?
We don't know the details of the contract, of the, of the attachment, what's in the attachment?
Basically, yes, you do. Basically, it's what's been discussed here tonight.
I guess I go here, why could you not share it?
It wasn't mine, it wasn't mine to share. It was a document that our consultant had, he's explained everything in the asset purchase agreement, in, in the last four meetings we had plus tonight. Wally has then reviewed that to make sure exactly what's in that agreement is what he's explained to counsel, and has reported that it is.
So it can be put into a document?
Yeah, I mean, I think it's probably available after...
The council members can lay eyes on?
I think it's probably available tonight. We have not had that document.
Tonight, she's asked for it to review it, and then...
But, but it wasn't in a form to be reviewed.
So I guess that would be a good reason to me to delay a workshop, that's the reason we do it.
Well, and, and you know, that's, you're certainly entitled to your opinion on that, but everything that, that is pertinent to the agreement has been discussed with the council over these past several months, and has been brought up here tonight.
I guess we'll see why it can't be put in document form for their eyeballs.
Thank you, Mr. Tensley. At this time, I entertain a motion and a second to move this item, which is the city council review an asset purchase agreement relative to city cable to the voting session to be held tonight.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
No.
Opposed? Motion, yes.
Do you need roll call?
The only opposed...
Or do you have it, okay.
Mrs. Pearson, is that correct? Yes, motion passes. Moving on to item G, the city council review a petition for annexation for property located in the thirty-four hundred block of PP Highway and owned by Randy Persons. Mr. Avery?
Thank you, Mayor, members of council. The city clerk did receive a request for annexation of a parcel of land at the southeast corner of sixty-seven bypass and Canal Boulevard. It's immediately to the west of Farm Bureau offices out there on, on PP Canal Boulevard. Questions?
I make a motion, we move item G to the work, to the voting session on April seventh.
Not tonight.
Oh, tonight, workshop tonight. I'm all confused again, for tonight.
For tonight?
Yes.
Okay, motion, move this to the voting session, held tonight, do I hear a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item H, the city council review an amendment to the code of ordinances, chapter six oh five, entitled Business Licenses and Regulations Relative to the Farmer's Market.
Good evening, Penny McGath with Downtown Popper Bluff. Last year, Downtown Popper Bluff started a farmer's market at the historic train depot, and we ran into two huge obstacles last year. One was our location, and one was the lack of produce at the farmer's market. At the same time, we're having a market down there, there's a market on the Coliseum parking lot defined by an ordinance that allows a market to be there, and they're in a great location, they have great visibility, and they have produce. So what we're asking is to make some amendments to that ordinance so that Downtown Popper Bluff can manage the farmer's market. And with that, we'd like to move the location to the back side of the Coliseum parking lot that runs, it would run north and south of Moran Street, and we'd also like to build a permanent structure there that would be approximately thirty-nine by fifty-six feet. That would validate that it's a real, true market. We're even going to try to build tables within the structure so that it's conformed, we don't have tables and tents, you know, and will be protected in the weather. We'd also like to open up the regulations that would allow eighty percent of produce and twenty percent for value added, and by value added, we mean like jams and jelly, plants, things of that nature, but we would have a mixture of eighty-twenty on that, and keep the, that it must be locally grown produce. We're working with several organizations to do what we're calling a community garden, and in return, they will be able to sell their produce at our market. One of those organizations is the Boys and Girls Club, which will benefit them greatly because they'll have produce to provide to the kids there at the club, and they'll work on the gardens, and then in turn, they can sell it for a profit at the farmer's market.
Who's going to pay to build the structures?
I have a entity that is willing to donate the money to do that.
That's great.
I also have some other funding opportunities available to provide things that we may need for the market, like we want to be able to take the SNAP cards to buy, purchase the equipment to do that, a cash register if we need it, anything that we may need for the gardening programs, we've got an opportunity for some monies to do that with. We just have to get the approval for this, get them the list and the prices, and then we can move forward with it.
Kind of moves the market back to where it was originally.
Yes, it used to be backed up by the...
And I think we only lose maybe a couple of parking spaces.
That was my next question, how many parking spaces?
It's twelve, so it's six, six...
I think a permanent structure would be much better than their temporary tents and all that.
What about the other market that's going on that was started last year, but they have made their own entity, and I only know about this because I'm a part of that board, and I think some of them are here tonight. They're kind of doing the same exact thing, and are you all speaking tonight, or...
I had a letter from a guy who said something about the lack of a Coliseum parking lot because he couldn't make it tonight.
She needs to come to you.
Can you come to the podium, please? Does anyone have any other questions for our director?
My name's Rhonda Boucher, I live on, at two four six three County Road, five twenty-five in Williamsville, but it's just right outside the city, we just got a address. I'm actually here representing Scott Russell, he sets up at the Coliseum parking lot every year. He got this letter from the Downtown Popper Bluff, I'm sorry, I didn't know how to need a thing to pass out, and he actually sent this letter with me because he had to work tonight, and he knew I was going to be here to ask permission for the egg cart.
This we've seen, I remember she sends out, this is from him?
But we actually started community gardens already, so, but I told him I'd pass it along, so, there you go.
They came, they came to the meeting and asked, like, I think it was the last meeting.
Our gardens only interfere with any...
Did you get one of these?
No, I didn't.
You can have that. Because there's two more going around.
Mr. Christman came and asked the council for permission.
Right, but there needs to be an agreement with the city, the city attorney needs to draw before we actually start doing that.
Our gardens will be at the Boys and Girls Club and then on the facility, on the grounds of this other facility. It's not anywhere, we're not taking, asking the city to give us any property to do a community garden on or anything of that nature.
I apologize, I got into the wrong garden.
Okay, her gardens, when you're talking about.
So you're doing one at the Boys and Girls Club?
They already do one, we're just partnering with them to help increase what they do, and last year, they had a lot of extra produce left over from their market, for them or garden, and we needed produce, and so...
Right, there's a lack of produce.
Right, so we've talked to them, and they're more than happy to bring it and sell it at our market, and it's going to take years to build a great market. I mean, we're going to have to start out slowly, and we may only have a few vendors to start, but if we have a good permanent structure and we do it right, and, and get all the things in there we need, it's going to, it's going to work.
Are they going to be open more hours than the sporadic hours that y'all did last year?
This will be a Saturday market from eight to twelve, that's what we've proposed. However, the structure will be there during the whole week for those vendors that are, will join the market, that they can continue to go down there and, and set up, because you and I know that if you pick corn on Monday, it doesn't sit there until Saturday. So those that join the market can sit down there any day, but the designated market day that we will advertise and promote will be Saturday, and we may have special events on Saturdays, we may have organizations that can come down and do fundraisers, as long as they meet health department guidelines, they can come down and, you know, do hamburgers and hot dogs to raise money, because we just want more visibility down there.
No more questions, I entertain a motion and a second to move this item to the voting session to be held April seventh.
So moved.
Second.
Motion, second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Item I, the city council will discuss recommendation from municipal utilities advisory board regarding an update to the current sewer pretreatment ordinance.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Our current pretreatment ordinance was adopted in nineteen ninety-nine. Most recently, Missouri Department of Natural Resources adopted the EPA rule changes to the pretreatment program, and these changes included slug control and best management practices. I believe this information was included in your packet. We discussed this at the earlier advisory board and would recommend these changes. If there's any questions, be happy to answer.
No questions, I entertain a motion and a second to move this to the voting session on April seventh.
So moved.
Motion, second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Mayor, I want to apologize for having to go on an emergency call, man, I just went move my van, it's kind of double parked. I want to apologize to everybody.
Glad to have you back.
Before we do the action required items, I think we'll take just a...
Chief, will you take care of his ticket?
I told you, you got to go down.
I'm sorry.
I was afraid of that. I'll be right placement out there looking at it.
You got to take a break? This has been a heck of a meeting.
What is it going?
I guess we're taking a bathroom break.
Take a bathroom break, yeah.
Taking a break?
All we can without color, man, if you try to make a meeting type call. By now, fire department, they call me.
The fire department.
I know, I just asked.
I know, I'm doing it. Coming to the fire. Well, that's what I'm thinking. He's out there.
I know. I'll sleep tonight.
Nine-thirty? I'm glad we didn't have closed session.
Do you see him taking pictures?
I don't really do.
I don't know, but nothing, and you teach me to do pictures.
I'll be in on small.
You don't understand me, you know what I mean?
They're going to start checking the pictures.
I'm doing it, and then I'm like Ronnie was doing it.
Ronnie was taking pictures of Johnny.
What time it is?
I don't mind it.
And then you don't feel good on top of it.
I'll be all right.
That much more?
Yeah. Are you sure you're good? Really? Wow.
I'm sure she's there, I guess she went off out there in the hallway.
Can I tell him?
Yes, you certainly can. Make sure Mark knows too.
I apologize. Action required items, bill number seven six six four, city council will take action on an ordinance rezoning property from RS three central area residential to C one neighborhood commercial for future commercial development for property located at eight twenty-two Foley Street.
Move for first reading of bill number seven six six four.
Second.
Motion, second, first reading, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Mr. Duncan?
Bill number seven six six four, an ordinance rezoning property located at eight twenty-two Foley Street from RS three central area residential to C one neighborhood commercial.
Move for second reading, bill number seventy six sixty-four.
Second.
Motion, second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Mr. Duncan?
Bill number seven six sixty-four, an ordinance rezoning property located at eight twenty-two Foley Street from RS three central area residential to C one neighborhood commercial.
Move for adoption.
Second.
Motion, second for adoption, any comments? Roll call, Mrs. Kirby?
Councilwoman Pearson?
Yes.
Councilwoman Abshir?
Yes.
Councilwoman Branham?
Yes.
Councilwoman Smith?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim McVeigh?
Yes.
And Mayor DeGaris?
Yes.
We have six yes votes.
Thank you, bill number seventy six sixty-four is adopted. Bill number seven six six five, the city council will take action on an ordinance authorizing the council to execute a partnership agreement with Southeast Missouri Street Crime Task Force.
First reading.
Second.
Motion, second, first reading, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Mr. Duncan?
Bill number seven six sixty-five, an ordinance authorizing the mayor of the city of Popper Bluff, Missouri to execute a memorandum of understanding for participation in the Southeast Missouri Street Crime Task Force.
Move for second reading, bill number seventy six sixty-five.
Second.
Motion, second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Mr. Duncan?
Bill number seven six sixty-five, an ordinance authorizing the mayor of the city of Popper Bluff, Missouri to execute a memorandum of understanding for participation in the Southeast Missouri Street Crime Task Force.
Move for adoption.
Second.
Motion, second, any comments? Roll call, Mrs. Kirby?
Councilwoman Abshir?
Yes.
Councilwoman Branham?
Yes.
Councilwoman Smith?
Yes.
Councilwoman Pearson?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim McVeigh?
Yes.
And Mayor DeGaris?
Yes.
We have six yes votes.
Thank you, bill number seven six six five is adopted. Bill number seventy six sixty-six, the city council will take action on an ordinance authorizing the mayor to execute an asset purchase agreement on behalf of the city cable.
Move for first reading, bill number seventy six sixty-six.
Second.
Motion, second, first reading, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Mr. Duncan?
Bill number seven six sixty-six, an ordinance authorizing the mayor of the city of Popper Bluff, Missouri to execute an asset purchase agreement with regard to the city's cable television system.
Move for second reading, a seven six six six.
Second.
Motion, second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Mr. Duncan?
Bill number seventy six sixty-six, an ordinance authorizing the mayor of the city of Popper Bluff, Missouri to execute an asset purchase agreement with regard to the city's cable television system.
Move for adoption, bill number seventy six sixty-six.
Second.
Motion, second for adoption, any comments? Roll call, Mrs. Kirby?
Councilwoman Branham?
Yes.
Councilwoman Smith?
Yes.
Councilwoman Abshir?
Yes.
Councilwoman Pearson?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim McVeigh?
Yes.
And Mayor DeGaris?
Yes.
We have six yes votes.
Thank you, bill number seventy six sixty-six is adopted. Resolution number seventeen eighty-nine, the city council will take action on a resolution making appointments to the Downtown Popper Bluff Board and the Library Board of Trustees.
Move for reading, a resolution number seventeen eighty-nine.
Second.
Motion, second for the reading, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Mr. Duncan?
Resolution number seventeen eighty-nine, a resolution making appointments to the Library Board of Trustees and the Downtown Popper Bluff Board.
Move for adoption, a resolution number seventeen eighty-nine.
Second.
Motion, second, any comments?
When I was looking in the packet, it didn't actually have anyone filled in for the library board. Did we have a person picked?
Yes, I, I guess that one didn't...
It's in our paperwork from before.
Okay, it's Christie Turner.
Christie Turner, what about Carol Lewis? Because I know she had applied too.
I think she moved.
She moved?
She moved out of her bare road address.
Okay, because, all right. Thank you.
And there was one, only one opening, and two people applied.
Right.
Roll call, Mrs. Kirby?
Councilwoman Smith?
Yes.
Councilwoman Pearson?
Yes.
Councilwoman Abshir?[1794.12]
Yes.
Councilwoman Branham?
Yes.
Mayor Proton McFay?
Yes.
And Mayor DeGarris? We have six yes votes.
Thank you. Resolution Number 1789 has passed. Resolution Number 1790, The City Council Will Take Action on a Resolution With Respect to the Annexation of Certain Unincorporated Area of the City of Popper Bluff, Missouri, Such Property Being Located on PP and Canal Boulevard and Owned by Randy Persons.
Move for reading, Resolution 1790.
Second.
Motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Mr. Duncan?
Resolution Number 1790, A Resolution With Respect to the Annexation of a Certain Unincorporated Area to the City of Popper Bluff, Missouri, Such Property Being Located on the South Side of Canal Boulevard in Butler County, Missouri, and Being Owned by Mid-South Investments Incorporated.
Move for adoption, Resolution Number 1790.
Second.
Motion second for adoption, any comments? Roll call, Mrs. Kirby?
Councilwoman Pearson?
Yes.
Councilwoman Abshir?
Yes.
Councilwoman Branham?
Yes.
Councilwoman Smith?
Yes.
Mayor Proton McFay?
Yes.
And Mayor DeGarris?
Yes.
We have six yes votes.
Thank you. Resolution Number 1790 has passed. Next item is the City Manager's report.
It's 9:30. We talked to Bobby Godman today. They had the PBR at the Coliseum Friday and Saturday of this past week. Friday night was a little slower than they used to have. That's always a good event for the Coliseum, it's always well-attended. Saturday made up for it, had a bunch of people Saturday that showed up, so it wound up still being a good event. He thinks it probably didn't net quite as much as it has in previous years, but still a very good event, a good event for the Coliseum. We have a date now set for sure. I'll tell you a couple more times, April 26th is the buff up the bluff, and we think we have that that's not conflicting with anything else that's going on, and hopefully we get good weather and not the mud hole we've seen over there in the past few years,